Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
I would like to call to order the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. If we could all stand and face the flag, please, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Court can take the roll, please.
Commissioner McCall.
Here.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Chairman Greatham.
Here.
Any additions or changes to the agenda, please?
Agenda item three, I'd like to add Medicare Advantage renewal.
Okay, would you make that seven G then?
Eleven.
I'm sorry.
Eleven G?
Eleven G.
Eleven K.
Okay.
K.
I was in the new business. All right, we'll make that then.
I will support that.
Okay, I have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, nobody opposed?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Bill Greatham temporary chair for tonight.
Support.
I have a motion to support. Is anybody or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed?
Me.
I'm abstaining. Five to one, you lose, sir. Five to one, you lose. All right, thank you, Commissioner Hydeman. I have minutes for the previous meeting, both A and B, Commissioner and standing committees.
And make the motion that the minutes of the seven nine fifteen commission, eight sixteen, to approve file.
Second.
Motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. No proclamations on the agenda. We have the consent agenda items A through F, monthly summary on the budget, June and July actuals, notice of the license renewal requirements, manufactured homes, Enbridge project update for July, EDA monthly update July, and the convention center construction update.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve items seven A through seven F on the consent agenda.
Support.
I have a motion to support. Any discussion or anybody want to pull any of those out? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Report of standing and special committees. We'll start down at the end there with nothing to report, Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Just one, and you were present at the IRA Library. We had the proclamation. That was amazing. Quite a family there. And I was glad I was able to attend. It was pretty impressive. Dennis Miller was attendance, of course, Bill Greatham. We had the township there and families.
If I can add to that, also Senator Pavlo was there and library people and the family that was there. I would say, I don't know how many people, Dave.
I believe twenty-five family members. Some of them flew in from California and Texas just for this dedication and proclamation and honor of their mom.
Yeah, for the lady who was named after. And they actually just about doubled the size, if I'm not mistaken, Allison. They just about doubled the size of the library in Ira Township. So, super job. It looked really good. It was a very nice presentation, nicely done. It was well done. Thank you, David, for that report. Commissioner Riley, you have something?
Yeah, I'd just like to mention the slowdown we had on Sunday. I'd like to comment on that. Anybody read it in the paper today, I think you're going to get a good idea of what it cost to do that for the place. I'm all in favor of things that help the public and definitely we're fortunate in this area to live on such a beautiful waterway, there's no question. But I asked the Sheriff's Department just for theirs because I didn't have time to ask everybody else, and I got the Sheriff's Department, just the Marine Division. We were talking the vessels out there, between thirty and forty vessels, and we're looking at, for the Coast Guard, come up the figure of roughly about ninety thousand dollars to run this. Sheriff's Department alone for the dive team and their guys not counting Algonack responding up, not counting the fire departments extra, the brought in vessels and manpower, the police department to do the shore, you know, we're looking at roughly over ninety thousand dollars to run it. And, you know, and I understand everybody wants to get in a waterway, and I don't agree with some of the articles in the paper saying that the, one lady wrote in and said, well, this is, I mean, it's going to be free, it's going to be nice for the people to do it, it doesn't cost anything, et cetera, et cetera. Well, it does. It costs everybody in this room, taxpayers' dollars, to run something like that. And it's fine and dandy to enjoy the water, et cetera, but my concern is we're constantly looking at everybody's budgets. I mean, down here, Algonack, I'm sure is looking at their budgets, the city of Port Huron, police departments, fire departments, the county budgets. Everybody looks at budgets and wants to hack because it's so tough today to operate. And to put on things like they did on, and to spend some ninety thousand dollars and the Coast Guard even handing out life jackets to people that didn't have them after they were told to put them on before you enter the water, that's pure stupidity, in my opinion, on those people. And they should have said, no, you haven't got one on, get out of the water. And we've just, this thing has went, I mean, I'm all in favor of doing things in our area. I'm all in favor of the waterways and helping people. But my God, when it's costing the taxpayers of St. Clair County and this city and other townships and cities, that kind of dollars, I got a serious problem with it. I think it's time that somebody steps up to the plate that's running that and says, okay, we got, we got to compensate somehow the people that are involved, being the place. And do we have other agencies, maybe individuals that would step up to the plate and say, hey, I'd be happy to use my boat to do, not safety as a police officer and that, but at least to make sure they don't get blown to Sarnia. I just, I thought it was very nice, but it's getting larger and larger and larger every year. And I don't know how we can handle that, the countywide, citywide, to allow that to go on and just let it, you can't stop it. I understand that, but somehow who's ever running that has got to come up with some dollars to assist the agencies that are, that are putting this on. I don't see where we can put thirty-five, forty boats in the water and all the manpower, the bikes on the shore, and the police officers and extra. It just, when I read it, I knew it was going to be a problem, and I asked the Sheriff's Department a week ago, I said, on Monday, I want to know how many dollars? And I got it, fifty-two hundred, just for them, and that's not counting any of the other agencies. So, just vent a little bit on it. I think it's something that we have to look at as running tax dollars.
Very good. Commissioner?
Just on that, what about the jobby nooners? You'd have the same situation there then, wouldn't you?
Jobby nooners become a very small thing, according to this.
But in both, either whether it's large or small, as soon as it becomes a formal organization, now you have liability issues in somebody that's running this. Because from my understanding, this is completely word of mouth. You show up, and if you want to float down, you do. As soon as you have somebody put on it, they will now have liability issues and insurance. So, we need, if we look into the cost, if somebody's going to be running this, make sure we get our ducks in the room, maybe we have our corporate counselor even bill or get some thoughts on this, because I think it's really tough to regulate it.
It is. It is tough. And somebody said the other day, well, maybe you can tell them not to have, no, 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 you can't do that. You want to float down the river, I think it's wonderful. We have an absolutely gorgeous area, and I understand why they want to do it, but when you got to send that kind of manpower out to make sure, you know, everybody's okay and, and then that, Dave, the way the wind was, you knew what was going to happen, so...
Probably a suggestion, there's a local Mariners Coalition group that I go to every so often. It's not, it's something that Jim Adgeson actually puts together. Dave Brown, who runs both marinas, coordinates it. It's well represented from the American side and the Canadian side. And the original intent of that was always to, after, you know, after nine eleven, the, there's a lot of issues getting boats back and forth. So, they do meet a couple times a year, and all those different organizations are there. I would suggest to maybe go talk to that group and, and that would be the place to be able to go and have everybody in the room and talk through this thing. So, I'll find out when the next Mariners Coalition is.
Yeah. You know, it's not that I'm against people having the water and having the fun and everything, but I'm looking at it from a standpoint of the tax dollars, the people, everybody's trying to, like, I don't know, Algonack down here, I'm sure you got tighter budgets, et cetera, and you had people that assisted, et cetera. Somebody has to pay for all that, and I think down the line, you have to say, okay, that's enough, stop. Let's slow down.
And that's the difference between a sanction, you know, because you guys know well, we're in an early mold in the Offshore Races in St. Clair, which is a sanctioned event, which we pull insurance, which we pay for the policing services, you know, we, the organization itself handles all that. To a non-sanctioned event, you know, you could, ten thousand people show up tomorrow and it's a real, it's a slippery slope.
Boy, and the thousands that were there this year.
Let's get in front of the Mariners Coalition Group and talk a bit about, and I'm sure they would subscribe.
Commissioner Riley, anything else other than that one issue?
No, sir.
Very good. Commissioner Hydeman?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. Commissioner Tomlin?
I have a...
That's a long list you got there, sir.
Well, I've taken copious notes. When I go to these meetings to represent you, I want to make sure I get all the facts down.
Go ahead.
Though I wasn't involved in this to begin with, but, you know, you've put me on the board and I'm trying to get it all strained out. But about three years ago, the county commission entered into an agreement with, for the I-69 corridor. And in that initial agreement, there were four counties, St. Clair, Lapeer, Genesee, and Chiahawasee. And subsequent to our entering into the agreement with those counties, the governor came out with his Regional Prosperity Initiative, and as a consequence of that, that same body has a related organization that includes the rest of the thumb being Huron, Tuscola, and Sanalac County for purposes of economic development grants. And in the presentation that we received at our last meeting, we learned that the state of Michigan actually thinks that this coalition is the most successful one that they have in the state. And in our county, not only is the county a member, but we have several other municipalities that have participated on a regular basis, including the city of St. Clair, Kimball Township, St. Clair Township, and the city of Port Huron. And we took initial action to start the process again, to come up with another three-year agreement, probably according to the same terms that we initially had. And in the thinking of the corporation at this point is to keep it as an I-69 corridor committee with the original four counties, but we'd still probably have a operating agreement with the rest of the, rest of the thumb. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention because we'll be hearing more about that and probably get some official correspondence about the...
How did they determine that we're one of the more successful ones? What kind of criteria were they using for that? Do you know, Carl?
Well, actually, it's the degree of cooperation that there's been between the various counties. We, we got the first project, was in Chiahawasee County. We helped finance a water, water line between the city and the township. And we've just been, we put together our EDA plan, what's that called, Bill?
SEDs.
The SEDs plan. Remember, we had quite an extensive presentation at one of our previous meetings about that. And the fact that we've added these other three counties for purposes of economic development, they, they look at that as, as being the best example in the state. Now, maybe that doesn't speak too well for the program, but Howard's our other delegate to the, to the commission, and our meetings, there's been very little acrimony. Wouldn't you agree, Howard? Yep, absolutely. And then we've also had a number of economic developments spinning off. I don't believe we've had any in St. Clair County. I think they've had a couple already in Lapeer and Flair. We actually, we took the preliminary steps to assist Kimball Township, and that's still out there, you know, with adding, you know, an industrial park for St. Clair County, but they've decided to participate in a different state incentive program at this time, but without, we do have some tools that are available through the Next Michigan Development Corporation to help grow employment that we wouldn't have if, if we weren't participating in an agency like that.
Commissioner Bone, you have something?
Question, originally, there, they had five designations available through the state. One, they had, for the UP, one was Eritropolis, and just going back how we applied, and that was the reason for the collaboration amongst the rest of them, because we felt better that, you know, we would have it. Have they expanded that number, do you know, Carl?
I, I don't, I don't think that they have. I mean, while I've been sitting on the board, I haven't heard anything more about that.
Didn't Traverse City get one and Grand Rapids the other one?
I thought there was five originally, maybe. I don't think there were more than six, but I know we got one. It was because of the whole regional planning, they're going to fund different initiatives, those types of things. I was just curious if they had expanded that.
I think the only, the only issue that we've talked about as a commission with our staff is the fact that we entered into this Next Michigan Development Agreement with these four counties before the governor came along with the Regional Prosperity Initiative. And even though we've expressed willingness to cooperate with the governor's Regional Prosperity Initiative, at one point, he was talking about forcing us to leave SEMCOG. And I think it's been a consensus of this board that if we have to choose one between Next Michigan and SEMCOG, our interests are more aligned with SEMCOG. The governor's justification for this program is supposedly economics, but after they set up our district and they did a study, they found out that we really don't have very strong economic linkages between St. Clair County and, say, Genesee County compared to what we have with, with Macomb County. We have a lot more people who travel from St. Clair County to Macomb County for employment than we have going to the other three counties, Chiahawasee, Genesee, and Lapeer combined. I mean, it's, it's, it's almost ridiculous. But that, that aside, right now, they, they appear to be willing to let us participate in both groups, which I think is advantageous to us.
Very good.
That's a point I'd like to emphasize, you know, if this is an opportunity for us to develop economic alliances going west down the sixty-nine corridor and then keep the economic alliances going down the I-94 corridor, it's a win-win for St. Clair County. And one of the, one of the most interesting initiatives that Next Michigan's been involved in is we've become a formal member of the United States I-69 Committee. There's a series of states from Michigan through Indiana, Tennessee, all the way through Texas where an I-69 corridor has been developed. We're the only state that has the finished freeway through the entire state. You know, you can come, you can, you can get on sixty-nine right here at the bridge in Port Huron and go all the way down to Indiana. The other states have only got portions of the proposed sixty-nine freeway, but connecting, you know, Mexico with Canada through the United States, it, it, it would provide, you know, substantial transportation infrastructure that would be beneficial to, to our employers.
Have they started paving that to make it ten lanes yet, Carl? Do you know?
Chinese, where we sell it, the Chinese.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think I was on the commission at that time. Commissioner McCall?
Only had a room full of tourists.
Can I take a fast? I am going to take a fast tonight. I have nothing to report. Citizens wishing to address the board, I have two citizens. Harold Tiberzy would like to address us regarding the St. Clair County Library position. Harold, if you would take the podium.
Please.
Give us your name for the record and then go ahead and address us.
Oh, my name?
We have, I'm sorry, we have a three-minute time limit. Harold is our, I mean, Howard is our...
This is Howard.
This is Howard and this is Harold.
My name is Harold Tiberzy, and I'm currently the trustee for the St. Clair County Library Board of District. In my term, I've been on the library board for five years, and I've enjoyed working on the library board. I just wanted to give you a little, my background, you've probably read it, if you haven't, you can pull it up. I'm a retired floor engineer. I worked as a public school teacher for a number of years before I went to Ford. So, I think I've got the background to work as a, for the next five years as a trustee, and I would like you to consider putting me on again for the next five years. I'm not that old, I'll actually be able to, but I'm just coming up to the top, I tell you. But I enjoy working with the library board, and I think I could help the library board. But if I do represent the area of Ira, Marine City, and I live in Casco, I've been there for twenty-eight years. My wife and I have been married forty-six years. We've been out there for twenty-eight years, and I think I could, I could help the people. And I do represent my neighbors, and that's why I'm here to speak for my neighbors and for myself. Thank you for giving me your time.
Thank you, Harold.
Thank you.
Also to address the board, Charlotte Stannulus regarding library trustee appointment. State your name for the record, please.
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Charlotte Stannulus, and as Bill said, I am applying for the position of the St. Clair County Library Board of Trustees. And I have applied because libraries have been important to me all of my life. As a child, access to the books was the draw. As a teacher, I saw the importance of the library to my students, who might not have had access to reference materials and computers at home, but who could get this access at our county libraries, local branches. As a community member, I appreciate the opportunity the library offers to people of all walks of life to enjoy hard copy and electronic books, music and movies, and to receive training in computer skills, and to have a place to use those skills and programs, both for pleasure and for bettering their opportunities, whether it's completing college applications, applications for various services, or for completing job applications and searching jobs. Many people use the computers and programs for personal enrichment as well, such as genealogy services. The library offers a social outlet, a place for tutors to work with students in a public meeting space. It offers lessons in everything from knitting to financial planning. At the Algonac Clay Branch, you can even check out a fishing pole and fish in the stream beside the library. I want to give back to the library system, which has benefited me and my community so completely, by serving on the Board of Trustees to assure that these wonderful and very necessary services at our libraries continue to grow for all of us in St. Clair County. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Any other citizens wishing to address the board tonight? If not, then we have no unfinished business. I'd like to take a moment and first off, thank the city of Algonac for hosting the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting tonight. We do this about four times a year. We move out into the communities, and it gives the local community an opportunity to see us in action, not that we're the model that you need to follow, but it's to see how your county operates, how your government, your county government works. Take this opportunity also to introduce a few of the people that are here from the Algonac Council. First off, Irene Bird is the mayor. Irene, thank you very much for hosting us here. Joe Nugent, sitting over here. Joe, raise your hand so we know who you are. Joe's been on the council in the past. He was off, he's back on the council again and doing his things. And Michael Bembis. Mike, raise, raise your hand. Michael is also on the city council. These people are all involved in their community. Joe and Michael are both in the lines. Irene, I couldn't tell you how many things Irene, as the mayor, does for this particular community. She just has been around for all, she worked in the schools, graduated from the schools, retired from the schools, serves her community very well, so compliments to you guys, and thank you for having us here. Very good. Thank you. Michael Bembis also serves on our Parks and Recreation Commission for the county. He was recently appointed by this particular board and serves on that, in that capacity. So, thank you, Michael, for doing that. Thank you, Howard. All right, let's move into new business. Just a kind of a preface real quick here. You're going to find us going through these agenda items rather quickly, and you might think that we're not doing our due diligence. That is far from the case because we work on a lot of this stuff behind the scenes. We have four different committees. Everything that's on here has passed through one of the committees at some point along the lines, and we have worked diligently to make sure that everything is up to speed. The final action, though, is to take it to the full board. Most of this stuff is pretty well set to go, so if we move through it quickly, that's the reason that we're doing it that way. All right, item A, approval of county dispersments for June and July 2015.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the county dispersments for June 2015 in the amount of nine million, six hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-two cents, and for July 2015 in the amount of ten million, seven hundred and one thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-one cents.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion to support. Any questions or discussions about those items? Hearing none, roll call, please. Commissioner Tomlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner McCall?
Yes.
Chairman Greatham?
Yes.
Item 11B is the library ancestry database three-year renewal.
Mr. Chairman? I move that the commission approve the library subscription with ProQuest LLC for the ancestry database for a three-year term in the amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars. Second?
Okay, I have a motion to support. If there are any questions or anything, I see Allison is in the audience, if anybody has any questions or anything else. Hearing none, all in favor? Let's do a roll call on this, let's get some money in. Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner McCall?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham?
Yes.
Item C, the library Times Herald database three-year renewal.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the agreement with ProQuest LLC for the subscription to the Port Huron Times Herald database for a three-year term in the amount of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. Support.
A motion to support. Any questions on this? Again, library people are in the audience. All right, roll call, I mean, yeah, roll call vote on them. Commissioner McCall?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Greatham?
Yes.
Item D, library board appointment. Okay, you have in front of you a ballot that's prepared by the clerk. Harold Tiberzy's name is on there, Charlotte Stannulus's name is on there. You heard from both those citizens tonight. If you would, please mark your ballots and then send those down toward Commissioner Bone and who's going to be for county?
I have a motion to close nominations.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion to close nominations and support it. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Mr. Clerk, will you give us the results, sir? One for Stannulus. One for Tiberzy. One for Stannulus. One for Stannulus. One for Stannulus. Six, one, Stannulus. Okay, thank you very much. Charlotte, thank you very much. Allison, will you get in touch with Charlotte, please? And Harold, I want to thank you very much for your, for your time on the board.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch with you also. All right, let's move on then to, do we need a motion? We don't need a motion, do we?
No.
Okay, all right. Let's move on to item E then, the fiscal year 2015 Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement. We don't need a motion, do we?
No.
Okay, all right. Let's move on to item E then, the fiscal year 2015 Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the county commission approve the fiscal year 2015 Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of $40,057.
Support. A motion to support. Any discussion or any questions about this particular grant? It is, by the way, no match required. It's 100% federal funds. I don't think we need a roll call on this, do we?
It's, no, we don't.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item F, fiscal year 2016 Community Corrections Plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the, for year 2016 Community Corrections Plan and grant application amount of $305,142.
Support. Okay, I have a motion and support. And if you notice, there were two separate numbers in there. You add those two together, you should come up with the number that, that we just read out loud there, so. Any questions from anybody? Again, I believe this is, this is part of the R-S-A thing, so I don't see a match on there anywhere. So we're not spending money. All in favor of that grant?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item G, Law Enforcement Services Agreement with the city of Algenack.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the Law Enforcement Services Agreement with the city of Algenack for a term of 10/15 through 9/30/18 in a total amount of $2,026,136.
Support. I have a motion and three supports, so Jay picked the one. And any discussion? Commissioner Rushing? Will you give a rundown on that? Yeah. It, it started, this is, they're in their fourth year now. They did three years ago, they started and they did three year, they did a three-year term. Carl, you were just leaving, I believe, when this piece came into being. And it was an effort to save the money from, to save the city some money. And on the, to the benefit of the city council, the sheriff called me and he said, "What do I need to do to get this contract?" I said, "You need to do two things. One, you have to save everybody's job that's working there right now and hire them. And two, you need to save them some money." And that was the council's request. And the sheriff did exactly that. There were six full-time officers. They offered six full-time officers a job. Five accepted the job and are currently working there, are extremely happy. I've talked to all five of them. They saved the city upwards of $200,000 roughly. I'm using some round numbers now. So over the term of that one contract, they saved about $600,000 for the city of Algenack. With this new contract, again, you're going to be saving in the neighborhood of $600,000 again, so roughly $1.2 million will have been saved over the life of these two contracts. I have talked to the mayor, I've talked to Michael Bembis, I've talked to Joe Nugent, and I've talked to some other people on the council. And my understanding that everybody is very pleased with the sheriff and what they are doing. I will say as a member of the Algenack Lions Club, when we put on the Pick Pole Tournament, we are very pleased with the sheriff. He sends his dive team down here and we have our kids' fishing contest. He sends his boats down here for support for our water events that we do, and we do two or three of those. He puts people on patrol, he puts them walking, he has them on bicycles, he gets other communities to come in here, and it's just been, it's been working out great. If Joe or Irene or Michael, I'm not saying this the correct way, shake your head.
That's perfect. Actually, perfect.
Okay, yeah.
We're all pleased, but I think the one thing that we probably left out is the reason we did this is because we were minus a police chief at the time.
That is correct. And that is, that is Sheriff Donlin's plan all along, is he will not come in and do this. He was asked to bid it at some other point, I think maybe, Carl, you may have even asked him if he would do it, I'm not sure, but if he doesn't do that, if you don't have a police chief, then he'll come in and do it. And you're correct for saying it that way. Thank you. Any other questions or discussions on the, on the? Commissioner Heidemann?
Just a comment. The members of the board of Algenack, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you can kind of tailor-make your agreement, when you want to service, how many hours of service. You can kind of tailor-make that with the sheriff and he will work with you so you get the kind of police coverage you need in your community.
I think that's a very important point to make. It's not that once you enter into an agreement with the sheriff, the sheriff's dictating the services that you're getting. It's really services à la carte.
It is.
That, that council has a opportunity to choose what configuration of services and the sheriff provides them with different alternatives and different costs.
Yep.
I'm glad to see that it's worked out so well.
Algenack requested 30 hours of coverage. That would be one man, 24 hours a day, and then six additional hours per day. And those six hours are placed where service is most needed. So that's what's been happening. Anything else? Commissioner?
Twenty-second, here, I believe that the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but services have expanded and I believe, not, nothing against your police department, but the sheriff has more tools to use to give you the service and apparently you're very happy with them. So he has the facilities and the workforce to give you more service if needed. He can have a lot stronger police force down here rather than what you had before. So it's been a great partnership between the city of Algenack and the county.
Thank you. Commissioner Rushing? Anything else? All right, all in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Very good, thank you. Item H, the airport accounts receivable write-offs.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would move to approve the airport accounts receivable write-off in the amount of $25,336.69.
Support. I have a motion and a support. Any discussion? Some of these things go back as far as 2009, so I guess it was time to clean up the books. Any other notes, thoughts, discussions anywhere? Do we need a motion? All right, let's do a roll call on this. We're giving them some money here. Commissioner Tamian.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Chairman Greatham.
Yes.
Item I is the landfill accounts receivable write-offs.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the landfill accounts receivable write-off in the amount of $174,518.44.
Support. Okay, I have a motion to support. Any discussion on this? Commissioner Heidemann?
As you know, I really get heartburn over this one because what, what has transpired, and this is about the third time since I've been on the board, I'm thinking we've, we've had to write off up to a half million dollars.
300, 180, and then 174.
And, and like I said, I, after we discussed this at committee, I went home and I, I called our administrator and I said, "You know, maybe there's a way we can deal with this." Because what happens is a community signs a contract with a waste hauler. And that waste hauler then takes the waste material to the landfill. And they're supposed to pay for the tonnage of waste that goes to landfill. Well, in the cases that we've had in the past, these firms go belly up, they go into bankruptcy, and, and they don't pay the bill. And yet, you know, we've accepted all of these communities' waste and we get no money for it at all. And then they re-file under a new name and they're back hauling garbage. And I, I suggested that the first time that one of these haulers is delinquent, that maybe a solution is to have our landfill director, obviously notify the community that the hauler's from and say, "This bill has to be cleaned up or, you know, we're going to bill you directly." Because, you know, I, I guess, you know, stiffing us for $500,000, we could give every employee in accounting a 2% raise roughly with that kind of money.
Well, what we've always done with our landfill money, because I don't want, we don't commingle the funds, our landfill funds have always went into our road match program, which is 900,000 now. We do not take money from our landfill and put it into general fund to pay for wages. So if you, if you look at where the money...
No, I, just... But you're too, but I'm just saying, because the people, you know, what's, Marysville, I don't care that county, you know, you guys lost the money, but the, the point being is the monies that our landfill generates, what we do with our money is we put it back into those particular programs, you know? So that's, that's 300, 180, 175 less that we'd have had to put back into the road program.
And that, that's back when we had the road program down to about a half million dollars, or 500 million.
Yeah.
500,000. We could have, you know, added that to the road program. And I think, Dave, you mentioned it a number of times, how important that was out in your community.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yeah, back to where, you can't commingle them when he makes reference. I want it to be, there's no mistaking that we could not use that money. And I think that's a point your might make, and for any raises, we couldn't do that. We also use the money to support the airport. In addition to that, as this has come forward, we have been working with other partners and Jeff's been great with this and our landfill and all the county commissioners. We are now contracting with some of the communities and we're actually going to have, Riley Township has requested to have their township meeting in October at the landfill. They are going to be looking to potentially contract with the county. So all they'll be paying for is a trash service or the landfill, whoever the garbage collectors are, is for the trucking service only. The actual billing will go to the township and then they'll cover the cost to the county. And that's been saving, and Jeff can give you more specific figures, I believe the first year was around 15,000 for Cotterville. They were the first target program.
It would be 18, I just talked to him. It's roughly 10% we've seen in communities. The city of Marysville is like 90,000 on their trash bill. I mean, it's a service that we offer. Our consultants write the specs, they handle everything for the city, the township. You just have to essentially go to, go through the bid process. So currently, we have four people that have taken advantage of this and we've seen at least 10% reductions in, in the trash. City of Marysville is obviously a big number because they spend over 600,000, closer to 700,000 a year. And they were somewhere in the 90,000 neighborhood savings just by going to the direct billing piece of it, so.
By, by doing that, what happens is the individual townships or the cities, 31 municipalities within the county, they get rid of the middleman. The actual revenues that's being generated at the landfill, the tipping fees are the same. What's happening is now that they don't have to cover the cost, generally, I'm going to say 20 to 30%, what the haulers have been doing is putting that, because they don't know exact tonnage that's going to be coming in. So they're going to have to overbid that to make sure they get their cost. Because once you lock in a contract, being a previous supervisor, and what we did in Riley Township, it's near 200,000 for the contract annually. And they have to lock into that. So they get the money whether they have the tonnage or not and they have to cover their, that's just doing good business. So now, a lot of the communities are hauling just for the hauling service itself. And the townships are seeing, or any municipality's seeing, about a 10% bonus, which they can use in their general fund for whatever they use.
Thank you.
I, I guess, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I missed the committee meeting where this is discussed. But I guess the point I would make is that there is a cost. I mean, to, you know, we set goals in our budget for how much revenue we need. And if we don't reach that amount, we have to recover it someplace else. And where we, where we recover it is from the other customers. You know, if we, and so, to the extent that we're losing that revenue, we have to boost our rates to replace that revenue. And so there, I'm hoping that we can find some way. I, I think the best program, not just for us in terms of the write-offs, is the direct billing with our communities. Because it, it saves them money, saves us money, and, and then all they have to do is take a look at their own trucking costs. But there, there, there has to be a way to limit our, our losses with these, these people. I mean, if they're, if they're not going to pay their bills, we need to take some sort of action, whether it's cutting off, I'm not really sure what the, what the best, best solution to that, but I, I think that's something our administrative staff should take a look at and see if they can come up with a recommendation.
Yeah, I'm going to say, let's, thank you, Gary Fletcher, Kerry Bill, a handful of us sit down, what options do we really have here? How much? And to be quite honest, this goes back to 2012, if I'm not mistaken. They had actually paid us. But when they filed bankruptcy, your bankruptcy, you can, you go back.
They backed dated it then.
You go back date it at that time. So we were, we were, we were getting paid, correct me if I'm wrong, Kerry, we had to pay this back in the bankruptcy court ruling.
I'd forgotten that.
Against us.
I, I think that was a substantial number, too, if I remember right, that we had to pay back. I think it was close to 100,000, give or take. It was a big number that we had to pay back.
That's what we're talking about.
After they paid us.
Yeah.
And then that money went into the full pot that got distributed among all of the...
I, I think that's a very good point. And perhaps you've already done this, but I, I think for our own peace of mind, we should take a look at that again. I mean, given those circumstances here, they did pay us, but then the bankruptcy trustee turned around and said, "Well, I'm setting the bankruptcy date retrospectively, you have to pay him back the money he paid you." And that's how...
After he stiffed us.
Yeah, after he stiffed us.
Like I said.
There should be some way to get around that, but I'm not smart enough to tell you what it is.
All right, any discussion? Any other discussion? Good, good discussion, gentlemen. Anything else? Roll call? Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Chairman Greatham?
Yes.
Item J, Public Guardian Reorganization.
Mr. Chair, I've moved the approval of the manning table revision requested for probate court public guardians office by eliminating two part-time case manager positions, adding one full-time assistant public guardian position, and adjusting the wage scale and job description for the public guardian position.
Support. I have a motion to support. Any discussion? Okay, we've already had a presentation from Mike on this, so if there are no questions or discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Item K that we added to the agenda was the Medicare Advantage Renewal. You received it electronically today or yesterday via email. There were quite a few documents that we had to go through. And am I to understand that this is for final action? Does anybody? It's not final action?
No. Well, I guess we could discuss it. I want to give a little bit of history on this, just kind of...
Where's it going to go from here then, to the next?
September 3rd, the, the committee meeting will have...
Final action there?
Our healthcare exalt there to speak with you and answer any questions.
All right, so our motion tonight will be to send it to the committee level.
We'll start with, I make a motion to have this go to the final, to the board on the September 3rd meeting.
Okay, I have a motion, support and a support. Okay.
Yeah, just, just a little history of this for some of you. Roughly five years ago, we had our actuaries come in and our healthcare fund was not, was not in good shape. It was, you've got five to seven years at current basis you're going at and essentially your recovery of healthcare is going to be broke or close to broke. So we put a work group together at the time. We had a group of, well, the county, county general employees, community mental health, along with road commission. We were all part of our, you know, retirement health system along with the medical piece. And then we had representation from the retirement system. You know, a lot of people that were fore-changed, a lot of people that weren't fore-changed. So we put this work group together, and we, we talked about a lot, lots of different issues. But one of the big things we did at the time, if you look here for the post-65, the county used to be the first payer, for example, on that, and then the Medicare would pick it up after that. Okay? We just made the change to that, which the county became the secondary, and Medicare became the primary. Kerry, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm speaking out of the text here on this. Just that savings alone, didn't even change any coverage, just by changing that, saved us over 800,000 dollars a year in the first year, just by, by making those particular changes. We had our, we had our healthcare folks, Plan Moran, to help us through it, and we had some other, you know, obviously outside help on this thing. So, when you talk about the post-medical retiree, and you look at the increases now roughly 10%, you know, it's pretty well been, or it's been tracking for the last however many years. We did, we did see a substantial savings, because we did change some deductibles and some copays back roughly four years ago. You look in here, too, it talks about hardship and non-hardship. We used to have a policy in place at the county, if you collected a pension from the county of X amount of dollars, you would ultimately receive a hardship. Didn't have anything to do with your average household income. And I've always told the story, I know two millionaires that run hardship laws for the county, it wasn't, it wasn't right. So, we had actually changed it to your average household income, you have to bring your tax forms in. And we were over 100 plus, Kerry, that were collecting on hardship, and I think we're down to like 18 now, somewhere in there. I know it's under 20 is the number that actually are true hardships. So when you look at this, and you talk about what is a hardship, and what is a non-hardship, those are, those are the criteria for that, and, um-
This sheet shows two hardship.
Two, two and one earlier today-
Two and the other's like 10.
That was one of my questions, and I believe there was 10 that related to me, so we're down to 10. 10, okay. So, but, that's just, so when you look at what a hardship and what a non-hardship, and what the criteria and the reasons, and the changes that we made, you know, four years ago, because of company vision around. So, that's kind of my little chmeo on just some of the stuff.
You're good, thank you. Anybody else?
Well, going over this history, backing up just a little more, uh, what was it, 10 years ago or so that the feds, uh, requested that we had to separate, or mandated that we had to separate our pension fund from our benefit fund? The pension fund, we have to deliver on the, the promise there, how much you're gonna get monthly. Uh, the benefit fund is flexible, and if we didn't make the changes that Commissioner Bone talked about, uh, we could've just basically erased completely any benefit for healthcare. And, uh, I think Commissioner Bone was pretty adamant that, under no circumstances, do we wanna go back on that promise to our retirees. And so we went to our retirees and, um, explained to them the, the situation, and the kinds of changes we'd have to make, so that future retirees could depend on having a, a benefit there. But so, anyway, I'd like to commend, uh, Commissioner Bone, because he, he picked that up and ran with it, and, and made the kinds of changes. He was the first one to talk about the IGWIC program, which was, uh, part of the, uh, opportunity to put him in the Medicare Advantage, our retirees, and make that program available, and then, at the same time, save, uh, the funding, uh, from the, uh, the retirement fund for healthcare benefits. And so, it was definitely a win-win.
It pushed it up, Jeff, how far did we push it up, from what, six years to 10 or 12?
Yeah, depending, depending on if you get, you know, like 1% growth, I think it's 11 years, if you get 7%, 10%, 16. We're still not out of the, you know, the woods, so to speak, but, you know, a lot of the discussion, too, was to see what affordable healthcare, some of these other changes, how it was going to affect, or if still in that, I'm not gonna say we're not gonna have to address it, make some additional changes down the road, but it gave us some breathing room, because I turned the clock back five years ago, it was, you know, it wasn't, it was good. And, um, so, like anything, we'll have to, I'm sure we'll have to, to readdress it and get out in front of it. To my point is, we have our actuarial report coming up, September 15th, if I'm not mistaken, at 10:00 AM. Um, I suggest everybody attend that, they're gonna be in to make their presentation, so we'll give an idea where we're at, because that essentially is what drives us to make the decisions, you know? And I've been to four retiree luncheons, talked to them, and, trust me, it's darn near public lynching when you go in there, but they do appreciate you standing in front of them and giving them the information, and the facts and figures, and why, you know, why you, why these changes.
Why? Uh, Commissioner, just, just a quick-
Rushen?
Uh, for any municipality, and we have 31, St. Clair County, the large ones do provide some healthcare for the retirees and their current employees, there are specific requirements, government guidelines on how you can take care of that money, you can't just go and invest it on something to get a huge return. So we have specific guidelines for that. And I would just wanna mention again with Jeff Bone, when we went to the retirees, mostly he did, because he, uh, run this thing, but the retirees initially, you know, they're, you're gonna take my healthcare away, or, you know, make them take a bigger hit. But for the most part, you'll always have the exception, but for the most part, something's better than nothing, they still have very good healthcare, and they knew that if we didn't do something, it would be gone. Jeff's efforts in taking care and the lead on this, and of course, all the commissioners and all the retirees, everybody that worked on this, they said, "We need to have this continue," and they're working to make this expand and continue to go on, so nobody's gonna have any healthcare, and that's a big plus for Jeff for taking the lead on that.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, that'll go on to the next meeting. Uh, administrator's report, and before, uh, Mr. Kaufman gives that report, I would like to introduce, so that our audience knows that, uh, Bill Kaufman is our county administrator, he's the head man in charge of most everything that happens up there, and takes his orders from us, but really sends us a lot of good knowledge and kinda guides us along the way in many ways. And Kerry Hefton, sitting next to him, Kerry, did you kinda do that a little bit? Is our, she's in our director of finance, and does an excellent job for us there, too, so you get to meet a couple of our people here. So, Bill, would you give us the administrator's report, please?
Sure. And I'll, I'll keep it brief. Um, staff is, uh, preparing a report that we'll be sending to the board regarding our public safety radio system. As some of you realize, there are some of the radios that we're using that will be obsolete in a couple of years. Also, some of the funding that we receive from the state of Michigan through the form of some credits towards our, um, membership fees and subscription fees through the state radio system will be drying up in the coming years. So, we're putting that information together to let you know what the operational impact of the changes will be, what the financial impact will be, and some of the alternative solutions that staff continues to explore. So, you can look for that in the next couple of weeks, that report. Tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM, I know several of you will be attending a meeting at the county's landfill, the, the DEQ's Solid Waste and Sustainability Work Group. They're the group that puts together all the guidelines and thoughts for new legislation and administrative rules for running landfills, operating landfills, for dealing with coal, fly, ash, compost as well. They will be meeting out at the St. Clair County landfill to get an idea of what our operation's all about. That meeting is, we could largely thank the DEQ staff for insisting that that work group come out, and we've been talking with them for a number of years to get them to make some changes to their rules, so programs like the bioreactor system would become an accepted technology that they would allow throughout the state, and the EPA, the same throughout the United States. So this will be the first opportunity for most of the members of that work group, and there'll be 21 folks that will be here tomorrow, be the first opportunity they've had to actually see our facility and learn how it works. So they'll be conducting their regular monthly meeting, but then there will be an opportunity for Chairperson Bone and Commissioner Hyden to make us a presentation along with the landfill director, Matt Williams, who'll be giving a presentation as well. Our consultants, CTI, will be there to answer any technical questions that they may have. So, if you are available, 10 o'clock tomorrow morning out at the landfill. The Commissioner Bone did mention that on September 15th at 10:00 AM, the pension board has scheduled a special meeting, they've sent out invitations to you today. 10:00 AM, September 15th, at the county board offices, Ny Heart will be making their presentation report on the findings for their actuarial study for both the pension fund as well as the healthcare fund. At that time, they'll also advise the board and staff on what they feel needs to be set aside to fund the program in 2016. So that's something we always look forward to, because it assists us in developing a bunch of- The, uh, community mental health will be there, and the road commission will be there as well. The annual meeting, EDA annual meeting this year will be a dinner meeting, it is set for September the 8th, again, will be in the evening. The agenda, as well as the details, have yet to be shared with us, as soon as we get them, we'll make sure that they're sent on to you. So, if you are interested in attending, please mark your calendar for September 8th, give us an idea if you would like us to make a reservation for you as well. The Convention Center, we're kinda winding down on reports on the Convention Center construction. You do receive in your agenda packet every month a copy of their, uh, the construction report, financial statement, as well as within your disbursements or your financial, monthly financial report you receive from SMG, a copy of everything that's going on, their income statement, and, um, income as well as expenditure. So, please make sure you take a look at those, if you have any questions. I think your first point of contact would be Kerry, and then we'll put you in touch with the SMG as well. Right now, we, we did just, this week, we signed what's called our Certificate of Substantial Completion. What that really does is it sets the date for the warranty to begin on all the work that the contractors have done for us. So that date has been set, it's an important date for us, as well as for our contractors and our engineers, and it was somewhat of a milestone, even though it's just a bureaucratic milestone, it was important to all of us.
Bill, before you go any further, is the, the punch list all complete?
No, there are just a couple of items left on the punch list.
Okay.
A lot of them will be taken care of yet this week. You know, they're little things, like trimming out entrances, a couple of gutters that need to be moved, there are, there is a little bit of cement work, as you're aware, there's a little bit of work that needs to be done, um, out in the parking lots as well, to repair some patches that were made, some grading that needs to be done on the site. So there is some work that needs to be done, but at this point, all but probably less than half a dozen contractors have been paid, and our commitments with them have been completed. So we just have a few more, what we just learned today, that Mega, they're the company that did all the precast walls, all of their work has been completed, all of their subs have been paid, all the work's been certified by the engineers and the architects, and we signed off on their contracts today. So, we're completing those, as you know, in the financial report, there's still funds left over, there's still a little bit of work that needs to be done. Some of this may take some time, it could take several months before we finalize out every single contract, but we've, we've gotten pretty close.
Have you had any problems with the punch list, or the contractors completed work that you needed?
Well, as you can imagine, sometimes getting contractors to come back to a job to, to patch something on the wall takes a little while, but, um, no, so far, everything has been working out.
Good.
It's been working out well. And certainly not as quickly as we'd like to see it, but it is happening. No one's striking. We have had some nice editorials in the paper, and hopefully you've noticed those. The, uh, the predictions that were made by the consultants that you hired seem to be coming to fruition, and that's always good to see, that our original ambitions are coming true.
Yeah, and I just wanna touch, too, on this, I'm the representative on the CVB board, CVB has hired a person-
Convention Visitors Bureau?
Yeah, Convention Visitors Bureau, to assist in selling this, too. And we just had our, uh, selling conventions, and we just had our meeting on Tuesday with them. I will bring those reports and share those with you, very, extremely detailed, as far as what convention that she's in contact with, how many room nights, where they're at, as far as if they're in an RFP process, it's very detailed, and even has a piece, lost business piece on it, too. So, as they go through and they bid on these conventions, and if they don't get a convention, there are reasons why. Some of them are just the dates don't work, you know, like they have this group of 100 or 200, some of them have to do some type of room rentals, and I've told some of you guys, we're working on some things with the CVB, you know, possible attraction funds, some different ideas on some things, so this is coming to fruition. But the gal that they have that works for them is, the reports are extremely detailed, and I will get some copy of those, and, um, share those with you guys.
Okay. So, any questions you may have, anything that I presented?
The Convention Center didn't get put from the railroad right away, does it?
No, it doesn't, we're very careful about that. I can tell you, we had a number of construction meetings out there with the construction trailer, and when the railroad would come back, you'd swear they were gonna take out the side of that construction trailer.
You know, it's funny, I saw a billboard on, uh, I was up north last weekend with a bunch of friends, I was coming back on 75, north of Saginaw, they have a billboard for the Convention Center.
Yes, I've seen it.
And I was driving, like, man, that place looks great, wow, that's our place!
It's a very nice billboard.
Yeah, they have a glass right there on everything, it's, it's north of Saginaw.
It's, it's north of, um, what is it, 47, uh, the road in the Midland, you know, you come, Saginaw, if you're going north-
Yeah.
Get Saginaw, Midland, it's, it's, it's in the southbound lane between Bay City and S- and Midland.
It's the CVB pays for that, 1,800 dollars a month I spend on that. We just had that meeting there yesterday, and we just spend that. So there, the CVB, not just, you know, I mean, they have their salespeople, they're advertising this thing, I mean, they are, they are an exceptional partner as far as, you know, assisting and all the above, so.
Very good. Any can make a motion to accept this?
I would move that we, uh, receive, and, uh, the administrator's report as presented.
I support that. Motion to support, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous business, gentlemen, is there anything that we haven't talked about that we wanna talk about?
Well, I, I would just like to say, it's been a pleasure being back in Elginak City Council chambers, I've spent a lot of time in this room in the, in the past, and it's very nice to see some of the people that I used to work with. About that, a lot of really nice memories.
Very good. All right, uh, receiving file?
Make a motion to receive and file packets and all the information presented?
Support. Motion to support, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I would move that, now, need an adjournment.
Move, we adjourn?
Or, motion and support, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.